Welcome and thank you for joining us today for Truro Town Council's Committee of the Whole for Thursday, March 20th, 2025. I'd like to commence with a land acknowledgement before we begin our meeting today. I, Cathy J. Hinton, Mayor for the Town of Truro, acknowledge we are in McMoggy, the ancestral traditional lands of the Mi'kmaq people where we live, work, and play. We acknowledge the peace and friendship treaties and recognize we are all treaty people. Nova Scotia has 52 African Nova Scotian communities throughout the region. African Nova Scotians for generations experienced inequalities due to systemic racism. Their distinct culture has greatly enriched our province for over 400 years, and we are better for it and proudly celebrate their heritage and history. Councillor Talbot is not with us today, but will be back for our public council meeting. Councillor, the first item is the approval of today's agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
No, not for today.
Thank you very much. I'll call for a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Councillor Fleming and Councillor, I'm having a brainwave, Councillor Graham. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the agenda for March 20th, 2025? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, agenda is approved. Thank you. Item two today is the approval of the minutes, of the draft minutes for February 27th, 2025, for the Committee of the Whole, assuming everyone has had the opportunity to read the minutes. I would call for a motion to approve the minutes from February 27th, 2025. Councillor McGrath, seconder, Councillor Prior. Any discussion? Councillor McGrath?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had sent a couple of small corrections to Ms. Rowe. As long as those corrections are included, I am happy with the minutes as presented.
Okay, so assuming those corrections have been made, which I assume they have been. So the amended corrections for the minutes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Moving along, we're at item number three. We have a guest speaker today, and that would be Mr. Ken Henderson. So we're very pleased to have Mr. Henderson with us, who was the election returning officer in our chambers. He's going to provide us with an overview of the 2024 election. Welcome, Mr. Henderson.
Good afternoon. You said was. Someone told me when I started this, a non-去掉 appointed returning officer, your returning officer until either you die, or you're fired, or you quit.
Like the Hotel California, you check in, but you never leave. Okay, I hear you.
Anyway, okay. So I'm not quite sure what council wants from this, so what I did, I made a presentation that's based on the recommendations that are the last page or so of the report I submitted to you, and I'll just go through those kind of quickly, and then if there are any questions or clarifications, we'll deal with them at the end, if that's all right with everybody.
Fine.
And the computer I built this on, as you can see, the aspect ratio is a little off, so anyway, it's fine. I've got my notes over in this other computer, so we'll be fine. So this first slide is just a reminder, this is taken directly out of the presentation I did before the election outlining what governs elections. And as you're all aware, some of it is your own legislation, like the Alternative Elections Bylaw. Some of it is provincial legisla-- well, most of it is provincial legislation. The governing legislation is the Municipal Elections Act. And what, we'll come back to those two things at the bottom in a little bit later. In many cases, the, there were, well, there were no changes in the MEA, the Municipal Elections Act, despite the fact that for the past number of years that I've been doing this, annually, the returning officers meet with the province and recommend some changes, but they never seem to happen. So if you can bring your pressure to bear, that would be good. The, and, oh, and the CSAP Elections Act also governs their election, which we operate on their behalf. So as you also are aware, voter turnout is a major issue, not only for Truro, but generally, although not universally. And some of that will come up also later. A number of universities are working on coming to the bottom of what would create engagement in politics in general, in municipal politics in particular. This is from Alex Marland, who's at Acadian University, and you'll be glad to hear, in my opinion, it really falls to the provincial government to find a way to make sure that the public is aware and knows that they can stand for election and knows, is aware of municipal elections entirely. Brock University, as you're probably also aware, was doing some work. They had a survey attached to our election materials. The participation rate in that in Truro was very small, so its validity is, it doesn't have any real validity. However, there's some good information there that was gleaned by that work, and it's attached to the report that I submitted to you. At the beginning of the election, we had, I'm not going to say issues, but there was some confusion around the wards among potential candidates and among voters, and I have to say, among staff. But the basic rule is that the mapping of the election of the sitting council, because as you're aware, council sits until the election is over, so the mapping of the sitting council is in effect until the election itself begins. So there were kind of two maps floating around, and there was a little bit of confusion. And as you're also aware, those, that distribution is reviewed every 10 years. It's required to be, each ward is required to be within 10% of each other, or an average, unless there's a special reason. And so that review had been done. The planning department did a lot of work on that, and we eventually got everybody on the same page. Although I'm not 100% sure we ever got a really accurate, actual description of the ward boundary. We knew the maps were accurate, we knew our lists were accurate, but that because the planning department had to use property lines in order to balance out the population, that when you try to read that description, it's a pretty complicated looking thing. Anyhow, we, the, we're confident that the distribution that we used is accurate. It was dealt with by not only us, but by Elections Nova Scotia and by the Intellivote, the polling company that we used. So to the recommendations, and these aren't in any particular order, but one recommendation is that municipalities, as a group, or somehow, the CSAP elections be severed from municipal election. They're very, very difficult to manage. There's no voters list for them. People go to the, whatever polling device they're using, or a polling station, they identify themselves as a qualified voter, entitled person is the term that's used. They, elections officials have no power to challenge that. The courts have ruled that you can't challenge that when somebody is, so I know for sure, not this election, because it was uncontested, but the election before, I know for sure there were a handful of people who voted, maybe they thought they were qualified, but no, they weren't. Fortunately, the margin in that election was large enough that it was immaterial. But it's just, it would be so nice if the Acadians School Board would run their own election. And we have some challenges with communicating with them in the summertime, too, because a lot of their staff, of course, it being a school system, are off in the summer. So anyway, it's not ideal. And you may wonder why I was the returning officer for that. They, the province asks one of the returning officers in the area served in one of the Acadian districts to volunteer. I did volunteer, partly because it's called the District of Truro, and there's enough confusion already without the District of Truro being managed from somewhere else. Okay, so the second recommendation was the town established Campaign Finance Bylaw, similar in intent, if not in scope, to the HRM one which I attached. It is very, very detailed, and it is very stringent, and covers a lot of things that I suspect are not important for Truro. But now, as it stands now, the finance rules for municipal elections are very fluid, and nobody seems to have any enforcement authority. Some of the financial documents come to the returning office, some go to the CAO's office. And the, anyway, it would just, having a bylaw would be very helpful. We did ask, and when I say we, I mean the returning officers who met with the province. We did ask that the province create a, I don't know what the proper mechanism would be, but a model bylaw that, so that it, in our case, we had a lot of back and forth with Colchester County because of the differences in our election procedure. And if you overlay that with everybody having a different finance bylaw, it just creates confusion among the public. So if the province could be persuaded to create a, I don't know, it may, either could you do provincial legislation, I suppose, or create a model bylaw, but whatever, so there'd be some standardization across the province. It's, the recommendation is that the town give consideration to this, not that they do it, and I'm only passing that along because it's one of the most frequently asked questions at our office. The people that we see in our office, it's not a cross-section of the electorate, we see, we're more likely to see someone who's new to town. And a lot of people who are new to town say, well, what's this ward business you're talking about? The, so as you all know, because it's in the oath that you swore, whenever it was, a few months ago, the councillors all act in the interests of the town at large, and so anyway, it'd be worthwhile giving some consideration. And I put that bit in there about a committee of councillors and citizens convened for the purpose, because whether they had spoken to each other or not, two citizens suggested that to me. And they, they're, this is not directed at you people necessarily, but they said they didn't think it would be appropriate that people for whom the current system was successful be the ones that decide on whether it's maintained or not. I wouldn't say such a thing, but you know. Okay, so if possible, a site for our office could be provided in a space that we can control the hours. The, if there's a graph, graphic presentation in the document I gave you that says when people engage the system, and many of those times of day that people might want to call our voter helpline are outside the regular office hours of the town. I know there were issues with the building itself, but the, during COVID, when we ran out of our building that we weren't sharing with anybody in Victoria Square, we were able to build our hours around when things were actually happening. So I realize the town's pressed for space, so you know, but if possible, that would be good. I'm going to try to hurry this up a little more. That is, as it was this time, all the kiosk voting on Election Day be at two polling stations with a third in reserve located here at Town Hall. People knew exactly where to go. The town staff who manned or personed those polling stations were familiar with the building, were familiar with everything. It just worked very smoothly to have them here. And when we had a third, we had a third polling station in our office, so that the people downstairs, as it turned out, that's where our polling stations were for the general public, if they ran into some difficulty about documentation or whatever, the people at those polling stations didn't have to deal with them, they could send them up to us, and we would, we had access to all the resources needed to service what their issues might be. We're recommending that there not be an early voting location at the Douglas Street Recreation Facility. It was good to have it there because it was in a different part of town, and it was accessible by different neighborhoods, but it wasn't really compatible with what the recreation staff were trying to get done up there. We didn't really have a great space. It was kind of impacted on the work that they, their routine work that they tried to do. So I think a different solution should be found for that. Again, you know, as an example, the stadium is completed now, so I don't know if that would be a usable space or not, but anyway, just, I think, I think we're, I think it's not compatible with what you're trying to do up at Douglas Street. The, quite a few municipalities provide candidate information on their websites. Now, that doesn't mean information for candidates, we did do that. You were able to go on there and download the candidate's handbook. But quite a few municipalities have a, I don't, a big, a one-page, one-screen picture and bio of each candidate. It's very difficult for candidates to engage the public. It's difficult for us to let the public know how the election's going to work. Without a daily newspaper and with the fractioning of the media landscape, it's very difficult to get the word out. And that the municipalities that did do that are reasonably confident that it did increase their voter engagement and their voter turnout. Again, that research is kind of underway, so we don't really have hard data on that, but the anecdotal evidences that it worked out for them. This is in here every time. If council plans to change anything, like the alternative voting bylaw or whatever, please do that so that it's in place no later than May of election year, because May is when the planning and layout of the whole operation is underway, and it's very difficult to deal with changes of procedure after that. And that's in place now. The Elections Truro CA address is maintained, so it's there when we need it. We're recommending that all voting be continued to be by electronic means. Mixed elections are very expensive and very difficult to administer, and I, we've had pretty good penetration with access to voting. If you look at the stats in there, you'll find that the time it took to vote was, on the internet, was less, well under a minute, I think forty-some seconds, and on the phone, because you have to listen to the instructions, was less than two minutes, and you can do it from anywhere. So I think that that would be, that would be my recommendation, anyway. The town, if the town could embark on an election awareness campaign early in 2028 to engage the citizens of the election process, it's always been an issue that the elections happen in the early fall, and that means the run-up to them is when everyone else, when everyone isn't here, when people are scattered to the four winds. So if a campaign of public awareness was begun in earnest in the, well, I guess, late spring, May, June, I think it would help that, and it would be a, an asset for potential candidates, too. They can get their campaigns underway. And that the Halifax Bylaw, which I mentioned a minute ago, it has provision in there for becoming a, you can't become an official candidate because of the provincial legislation requires that that nomination day be in September, but you can be officially registered as a candidate in Halifax, so you can go out and raise money. We did have a few candidates, and they may be sitting right there, I don't know, who we had to phone bank managers and convince them to allow candidates to open the bank accounts that the legislation requires, because we couldn't say to the bank manager that they're a candidate, because they weren't, because of the way the legislation works. So it would just be helpful if, all around, if that were kind of ironed out to some extent. Again, this kind of comes up perennially, sometimes from candidates, sometimes from citizens, sometimes from just, I don't know where. But as you are aware, the provision of mobile polls is defined in the legislation, and in Truro's case, there are four facilities that we provide mobile polls to. At various times, it has been suggested that we provide that service to other facilities, which we certainly can do, but I don't think it's appropriate that the returning office makes that decision as to what facilities we go to and what facilities we don't. So if council wants that to happen, they, we need some kind of guidance, because it affects, it affects our planning, it affects how much staff we're going to need, it affects a lot of things. So if there's a desire for them to go somewhere else, we need to know that. We have, in the past, made informal arrangements with facilities whose administrator has called us and asked for help in helping their residents, and we have been able to do that much. But if we, if we're going to do a kind of an official mobile visit to a facility, then council has to decide what, which facilities those are going to be. There's some mention in the report there about some difficulties we had with candidate behavior. And during this past election, you're aware, that municipal affairs produced, I think it was three sets of documents around code of conduct. One of them had to do with the code itself, one had to do with how it's to be enforced. And if that code of conduct could somehow be made effective for candidates, now I recognize that there's an issue with that, because the enforcement procedure that's in the provincial documents is fairly complex and time-consuming, and you haven't got time in election to do that. And then there's also the rights impact of the rights of a candidate who has been duly nominated. So, but anyway, it, the, based on the phone calls and messages we get from the, got, from the general public, the public expects us, returning office, to enforce some kind of behavior, and we have no authority to do that. So I'll leave that in your capable hands. And I was surprised by this one. I had a potential candidate phone up, and it might have been one of you, I don't remember who it was, and they wanted to know what the level of remuneration and expense arrangements were for a councillor, and I thought, well, that must be pretty easy. Turned out it wasn't. Finance ran around for a while and did get me the documents in a usable kind of document that we created, so. And maybe that's something that the general public would be interested in if it was on the website. I'm pretty sure that Halifax runs councillor expenses and whatnot on their website, but I could be wrong about that. And I don't know if that's necessary, but if people had a general idea of what the parameters were, it does impact someone who wants to run, that, you know. Okay, I think that's it. So I did put at the end of there that this has been my, I warned Mr. Doulter when he called me, I said, I'll do it this time, but this is my last time. So I did talk to a few returning officers and former returning officers, and the general procedure seems to be that returning officers stay on until May of the year of the next election, so that there's any special election required, which, as you are aware, has to be run based on the rules and whatever of, that you were elected under, that that returning officer does. I don't care that the, I'm happy to meet with councils, wish whatever they want, whatever, whenever they want rid of me, just let me know. And I, it has been, I used to teach municipal government in, as a junior, as part of junior high social studies, and it's really been interesting for me to be involved these number of years and see how it actually works and see what the challenges actually are. So I really appreciate this opportunity. And I'm letting this roll by pretty fast, because I'm sure I missed somebody. But we've, we've had absolutely fabulous working relationship with town staff over the last number of years that I've been doing this. We come in here every four years, and we set up and get in people's way, and we ask them weird things that they, for bits of information that nobody has, and they, no one has ever complained. And I, when returning officers get together, I will tell you, that's not a universe, that's not a universal experience of returning officers, I'll put it that way. So we're very grateful for the town staff and their cooperation and the skill and thoughtfulness that they bring to supporting us through the election process. So that's my overview. If you have questions, I'll try to answer them. I've got my book with me, but you, you don't want me to look anything up.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Henderson. I couldn't agree more with the town staff has been during election time, they're absolutely incredible. But I must say, it's very discouraging when the voter turnoff, turnout from participation was down almost eight percent from 2020 to 2024, and very, very, it's very sad to watch.
I don't know if this is the time to say this, especially when I'm sitting directly across from you.
Say it.
But, but the general, the general observation among returning officers is that turnout goes up if the seat for mayor is contested.
I heard that as well, yeah, yeah. What are you going to do? You're stuck with me now. So I, and I love the idea of the conduct, because I'd have a lot of complaints from when I was still deputy mayor at the time councillor, about conduct with some candidates that were happening. And so that is good, if we could tie something into that, that would be good. I'm very interested to hear what my fellow councillors would think about the council at large omitting the wards and having one town of just, I know they do that in Amherst.
There are only three left. There's Truro, Amherst, and I think it's Westville, it's one of the Picto County towns. And it's not, it's not based on size, I mean, Truro's the largest town, but Kentville and Bridgewater and Amherst are in the same ballpark, and they're all at large.
Yes.
So I mean, I understand that for campaign purposes, it's a bit more challenging, but there could be a candidate who, well, for whatever reason is wanting more, too, has really strong support in the other wards as well. And I know it's complicated, so.
Yeah, exactly. All right, I'm going to open it up to questions from council, and I see Deputy Mayor.
Just wondering, I found that when I was campaigning, that it was difficult getting in large apartment blocks. Had to contact the manager, even then, they said, well, no, I'll take some pamphlets and I'll put them in the front, or I'll hand them out somehow, or I'll leave them here or there. So it wasn't, and I do believe that, and maybe I'm wrong, but I do believe that some of the communication that there is an election happening comes from the candidates themselves and the interaction with residents, knocking on doors, talking to people, et cetera. And so do you, do you see that as one of the limitations, or one of the reasons why we'd have lower vote turnout?
Legislation that requires that access to apartment buildings be made available to candidates, it also requires that a provision be made for campaign advertising in public areas of the building. There's some language in there about it has to be reasonable or something, and residents are permitted to put like a sign in their window or whatever.
Yeah, I realize all that, but I'm just saying, it is, it is, like it or not, it's a barrier to getting to somebody. It's a lot more difficult to contact someone on the third floor of an apartment building than it is a residential property.
Absolutely, and we have, I don't think this past election, but the election before that, we have made calls to landlords and read the legislation to them, and some of them are very cooperative, some of them are not. Some of them don't live here, so they typically have a building manager, though. What candidates have done is they have found a supporter in the building, secure a building, and they have rung their bell and got in the building that way. Not that I would recommend that, but that's, that's what people have done.
Right, okay, so that's just one point. The other point is, is that I did hear from three people in my neighborhood, and right at the end, they were trying to vote, it was kind of like the last day or the day before the last day, and I didn't hear about this till after the election. But they had, they weren't, they couldn't vote. They went in to vote electronically through a computer, but they ended up in a survey and got confused and said, you know, and couldn't find their way out, et cetera, so they left. And I was wondering, I, I don't know, it was only three people, but three people in a block and a half area.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right? And I said, well, did you vote? Did you call? You could have called, or, you know, you should have called me, I could have helped you, or whatever, but anyways, no, they just said, okay, well, that's that. And so that was a level of frustration for them, and so I'm just wondering, was there more people that found that that survey at the end, somehow they got into that and got lost and didn't vote? Is that what?
I'm not sure if it was at the end, but certainly we had a few calls from people who went into the wrong link, and we wouldn't, I don't think we would do it that way again. Everybody agrees that that was, didn't work as well as we had envisioned, so it'll be, if there's some, I mean, I appreciate that the universities are trying to do this research, but I think it's really important that somebody does it.
Right.
So anyway, it's, it's.
My advice, my advice is that, you know, in a report, if you are not in a, thank you very much, first of all, for all the years you put into this as a service to the people of this town, it's appreciated. But you know, that's something that you would pass on, that really needs to be considered seriously. But, you know, that's something that you would pass on, that really needs to be considered seriously.
But, yes, and that has been passed on, and it's been, you know, the people, the IT people are the ones who would kind of come up with a solution for that, and the people at the polling company are aware, and they, I mean, we could say that, well, I'm not going to suggest, they're looking into it. But I will say.
I personally found it very easy to vote, which is, you know, so.
I will say that everybody who, no, listen really carefully, this is important. Everybody who had difficulty but phoned us
Right.
got help, and we were very, I'm not saying we tracked 100% of those, but we can go in and we can watch people as they proceed through the process. We can't tell how they vote, but we can tell if they were successful. And the vast majority of the people who we had contact with, we did follow up, and they did, they were successful.
Okay.
And people who, a very small group of people, we are able to vote for them, and we did do that in some cases. So, anyway, that has already been noted.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, deputy. Councillor McGrath?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, but Councillor Graham had us actually first even head of deputy mayor.
My screen's not showing up that, so.
I was, I support every single one of those recommendations that you've made. Fully support them. I would just like your feedback, though, on Millbrook. I think when I was tracking voters from Millbrook, I think I tracked 14 of them, and that was it. So, there's a couple little issues with that, in my view. It sort of skews the ratio from Ward 1 of, not ratio, percentage of voter turnout is one part of that equation. And I'm wondering how you feel we could engage Millbrook differently, better? Should they have a seat of their own at council? I don't know. And I don't know if you have feedback or thoughts about it to share. And if I'm putting you on the spot, we can have a discussion another time.
As to whether they can get their own seat on council, that's not my, Mr. Doltar and Mr. Thompson would be the people to look into that. But, but we did, just so you know, conversations did take place. We talked to the band office, I can't tell you exactly who, but to people in band administration. We did offer to, and we have in the past, set up polling stations out there. The pretty much exact words they said, "People out here are voting electronically all the time. There's all kinds of First Nations kind of opportunities to vote." So, they didn't feel that was necessary. There are people in Millbrook who, as a matter of principle, do not take part in federal, provincial, or municipal elections. So, it's a little difficult to figure out who's who in that respect. But certainly, there have been, have been times when turnout there was reasonably on par with the rest of the town, and sometimes not. So, I don't know. Candidates could, well, it'd be Ward 1 candidates and candidates for mayor could set up like a mini-town hall out there or something during the campaign. And we could do that, too. We could set up an information session there. But the advice we got back from the leadership there was that that wasn't required.
Thank you. Councillor McGrath?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Henderson, not only for the presentation, but for, again, your years of service and all the help that you've given to all of us candidates, and myself especially, over the last few elections. Supporting the recommendations or not is immaterial. How much of this is actually within council's control?
Not a lot. Well, I'm not sure. I think it is possible that council can create a local bylaw that manages the way elections run in Truro, as long as it stays within the requirements of the Act.
Yeah, which is currently what we have. We have the, you know, we have a bylaw now that governs the electronic voting.
Yeah.
So, yeah, council, there's a lot of things that council can do, again, as long as they comply with the Act.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the big one. I mean, it's all fine and good to have these recommendations, but if it's not within our power, like, obviously, I don't, we can pressure the provincial counterparts.
Well, that was my motivation in putting them there, is that those have all been presented, not necessarily by me, but by somebody at the provincial level at the debriefing that municipal affairs has after the election. So, they've all been presented, some of them at least three times. And the Act, to be honest, I have a copy of it there. The number of revisions on the front cover is unbelievable. It really probably is time that the whole Act be looked at in total. Like, for example, we're required to publish in a newspaper circulating in the community quite a number of ads, I'm going to say six, but, and they have to be published twice. It's very expensive, and our feedback is it only reaches 10% of the electorate.
Yeah.
And that's the reason why the amendments have made the municipal government act for a lot of municipal activity?
Yeah.
That we can use website and online as in replacement of printed news, newspapers, right, so.
Yeah, and unfortunately, unfortunately, somebody asked at the original meeting, returning officers, that we had to publish, because I already had an off-the-record conversation with the returning officers and CAOs that we weren't going to do that. But however, somebody asked the question, so municipal affairs had to answer it.
Yeah, but it is good information to have. I mean, I think there are things that we can, the things that are within our control, we can certainly look at, and we can certainly, I think, as a council, maybe consider writing something to the province in support of some of these recommendations. Like, I mean, one of the things you mentioned, no early voting at Douglas Street, not compatible with what the staff are doing up there. I see that as probably wise. That makes sense that it wouldn't be compatible. However, I would hate to see an end to the early voting. Would you have any recommendations on where the early voting should take place?
Not really. I mean, we've tried always to use town-owned facilities, and they're just, the town-owned facilities are sort of concentrated in sort of the central area of the town, so. So, I'm not sure, a facility that would be similar in location to that for advanced voting, I'm not sure where that would be.
Yeah, something for.
I mean, it could be here, in this building. We could, if a space could be found, but that, again, there's a lot of things going on in this building.
Yeah, I mean, the stadium, the stadium might be an alternative.
Yeah, yeah.
And we do have a community room up on the second floor, which is accessible, so.
Yeah.
You know, except this wall it wasn't, so, again, that's something we'd have to consider.
Yeah, especially, you know, in light of the, you know, dwindling voter turnout, doing everything we can to encourage people to be able to vote, to make it more accessible. So, having the early voting, having multiple places, having the mobile polling to go to, say, a long-term care facility where people may have more mobility or transportation issues. Definitely support all of that. Although, as you had mentioned with some of the folks who had brought things up, why would you trust those who are in the position to make the changes?
Well, that's up to you. You people can decide what way you want to do it.
Yeah, I mean, the code of conduct would make sense, because I, I don't know how many of us receives the complaints, but even I receive complaints from a candidate about their behavior, and I'm like, that's not, I have no control over that either, you know, eyes on your own work, focused on my own campaign. The only thing I would say, I will disagree with one of my other councillors, is that I don't think the moving to at-large would be beneficial. As you mentioned in your presentation, we have all sworn an oath to the entirety of the town. The ward district, the boundaries, it's really an administrative thing. So, one, you don't have, out of the seven of us, one person fielding, handling 14,000 people, and the other six handling the other 1,000 people, or whatever the actual numbers are.
Or you each handle the total population divided by six, or that depends how you look at it.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that the planning department will be happy to see you go to at-large.
Yeah, they may be, but I don't, I think.
Anyway, I'm not arguing one way or the other, I'm just, yeah.
I'll argue, but I think it's just an administrative division of labor, and I think it makes some sense. Anyhow, that's all my questions. Thank you again for everything.
Thank you, councillor. I want to thank you, Mr. Henderson, and I know for the nine years that I've been on council that you've been extremely accommodating during the election time, not only to candidates that are running, but also to our citizens that have had questions. And it's been exemplary, and I want to thank you very much for that and for your presentation today.
You're quite welcome, thank you.
Councillor, we're going to move on to our next presenter, and we're going to have Jeff Mercer, who's going to talk about the Truro Public Library. So, Mr. Mercer, if you'd come forward. Thank you for joining us today. If you just push the button there, we're going to make sure your microphone's on, and you're good to go.
How do I sound?
You sound just fantastic.
Great.
Whenever you're ready.
These things will control the presentation. But it's not the laptop I was told?
There we go.
Oh, there we.
There we go.
All right. Okay, sweet. Also have to master being left-handed, so this will be interesting, but here we are. There we go, excellent. So, before I get into the meat of it, I'd like to thank mayor and councillors for having me today. It's, you know, beautiful spring day, so love to be out of the office once in a while, even if I'm in another office, so that's fantastic. You may or may not notice, there's a brand-new logo at the front of this presentation, and that's because we're celebrating our Diamond Jubilee as a library system this year. Seventy-five years ago, town of Truro and Stuyac and municipalities of Colchester and East Hans decided the citizens deserved a public library. And here we are, 75 years later, still serving them to the best of our ability. And so, here I am, just to give you an update on the types of things we do now, it's changed a little bit in 75 years. And then also talk a bit about, of course, the funding situation and the provincial outlook for the year and that type of thing, so. Yeah, there will be events throughout the region, a very special event in the fall here in Truro to celebrate the region as a whole in 75 years. Details to come, please stay tuned. So, yeah, just a little bit here. We serve in the two, in our catchment area about 74 and a half thousand people. We have five branch libraries, two satellites. Those two satellites would be in Kinnicook and Middle Stuyac. We have, and the branch libraries and the satellites are where you have your physical items, where your programs happen, your services, all the in-person types of things. We also have our downloadable and digital services, so downloadable ebooks, audiobooks, streaming video, magazines, and other things like that. And then, for those who may not have access to the internet and also may not have regular or ease of access to our physical locations, we do offer some library delivery service, borrow by mail, drop-offs at special care homes, things like that. So, that's just a super snapshot of the types of things we do. And then, within the last few years, we've always worked with our other regional library partners, but we really came together in a consortium called Same Page, and that's been three years now, I think. So, there's eight partner regions total, which means the citizens of Truro have access to over a million items to borrow. They can just go on our catalog, say, "I want that," and it'll show up. Or if they're traveling, they can go to our other regions, our consortium partners. They use the exact same card, they can borrow items there, return it anywhere. Ease of use everywhere. There are nine regional library systems in the province. There's one that's not participating currently. Not that we don't share items with them, and they share items with us, it's just that the logistics of partnering with them did not lend itself to this consortiumal environment at the time of foundation. That might still happen in the future. But, yeah, all users get three weeks loans on just about everything. If no one else wants it, it gets automatically renewed for them. They don't have to worry about returning anything late. It'll happen three times. No late fees exist anymore, so it's only if you, you know, if the dog really eats the book, or you lose it camping, or something like that, then maybe we'll look for some compensation there. But no, no, there's no limits on your holds or your checkouts. I mean, technically, there is a limit, but it's very, very high, and no one hits it, so. And again, like I said, digital items, you can just go to our catalog and borrow them directly. There's a lot of the time you have to do a little back and forth. There's a little bit of a back and forth with hoopla, just because there's some registration process there. That's one of the services we offer that has magazines, television videos, as well as audio and ebooks and stuff like that. But in general, you can do it all straight from the catalog. And I've got the link there. So, if you need more information, I mean, obviously, you can ask me, but you can just go there, and it has pretty good FAQ and other things like that. And if you, for whatever reason, don't have a card, you can start working on getting that fixed at the same time. Just a bit about, do you, if you had questions whether people use libraries or not? This is from our 2324 annual report. Yeah, they sure do. So, this is throughout the region, but you can see well over 200,000 people coming in through our doors every year. We've got 3,600 new cards, almost 200,000 people using us online. 1,900 people, or 1,900 programs, rather, serving 20,000-plus people. So, people really are coming to us for things that maybe they can't get elsewhere, or that they can't afford elsewhere, or that only we offer. Almost 400,000 items circulated, that does include digital as well as physical. Close to 11,000 questions answered. And we've got 20,000, almost, active registered users, which is really close to the 30% mark of our population, which is a pretty good number. We actually have staff at the junior high today, trying to drive that up by another 500, but we'll see how that goes. And for the people who maybe don't have internet at home, or whatever, yeah, they're using our wireless that we offered everyone free of charge, no required logins or anything like that. So, close to 93,000 people doing that. And so, compared to the previous year, everything's up. People want more library, they're looking for it, they're using it, and we're happy to provide as best we can. So, you can see, program attendance has gone up by 36%. New membership, 5% increase, visits up by 11, and you can see some of the other numbers there. So, we're really pleased. This tells us that we're kind of doing the right thing, and that we are being responsive to what the community is looking for. Doesn't mean we can't do more, but we're happy to know that we're on the correct track here. And a lot of that is due to our municipal partners. Your support really means a lot, not just in terms of building, but it's in terms of supporting programs, services, helping with promotions, et cetera, like that. So, these are some real numbers that you can talk to people about. So, now, if we get to the money side, this is a combination presentation here, this particular slide. So, at the bottom left, you'll see rural Same Page regions. We would be one of those. So, this is the mandated funding formula. So, the province puts in 71%, requires the municipalities to put in the other 26%, and then the board has to raise, through fundraising or other options, 3%. Halifax is pretty much the flip, and that's because they're part of the city department, so it's a, but it's a different model there. But if you combine it in total, you can see what it actually adds up to. And that's that even though the province is supposed to be shouldering most of the burden, they're not. And that, so, you know, 51% is falling on the shoulders of municipalities. We all know that, and I know you're feeling it, that you're getting more requests from the province to do more and more every day, and maybe not getting quite the support you're looking for on a regular basis. We're certainly feeling the same thing. So, this just shows it to you from the library perspective. And then, so this is the reality at the local level for us. This is what the funding formula that is running out in 10 days or so, this is what they're mandated. So, the province puts in that 1.49, Town of Truro at 90, et cetera, et cetera. So, this is what's mandated, and yet, we're still asked to do more and more. But this number hasn't changed. And the provincial budget came down with no indication that there would be any change to this formula as of yet, which is disappointing, to say the least. But to give you a bit more of why, or sort of how that's going on, libraries have been working with municipal representatives, with community partners, and with government partners on a process. They were doing a review of the entire funding formula and what would be needed through April, September. That included salaries, that included collections, included cybersecurity, technology, things like that. And when it says salaries there, the focus, and I'll have some information in a slide or two, is not that we all just want to make more money, although, obviously, but it really is that we want to make sure our staff are getting a living wage, that they're compensated properly, that benefits can be provided so that they can do the work that they love to do and not be burnt out as much at the end of the day, and be able to provide for their families, et cetera. So, that's really what we're talking about there. So, as I said, library CEOs, board members, municipal reps, provincial government staff from a couple of departments, worked really hard on this and did a lot of research. And then, recommendations went to the province in the fall. But of course, there was an election, so that put the review and consideration on hold, and now, that's happened. And here's where we are, where they didn't announce any new funding in the provincial budget. budget, but we have not yet heard officially as to those recommendations. So as I said, we are hopeful that there will be a resolution that recognizes the important work that libraries are doing in our communities, and we do look forward to continuing that discussion with the provincial government. We were hoping that something would be announced with the budget, but it isn't always anyways, so the disappointment is there, but we're still hopeful. What it does do, though, is that this is the reality we're looking at. So in Colchester Enhanced, those are the living wages, so $24 and $26, 20 cents respectfully, respectively, rather. Our starting wage for permanent employees is $16.53. Yeah. We're aiming to do a 2.3% COLA increase this year, I'm going to try my best to make that happen, but even if I'm successful, and I think I will be, you still see that basically half or more of our staff will be under the living wage for our catchment area regardless. And that is really unfortunate concerning the work we do. And as you saw in those numbers, people want more library, and the survey we did tells us the same thing. They want more open hours, they want us to be open more on different days, they're looking for more programs in evenings and on Saturdays, in other words, outside of the standard working day, and they still want more items to borrow, whether physical or digital. And it's heartening in one sense, because there's no question that we're still relevant and that we're doing what people want, but obviously, they just want more. They want more library, we can't, we can't meet that demand. Few other realities, I did have a turnover in senior management, they went on to a new opportunity, but it does mean that I don't have money to replace that, and it was at a senior management level. So that's, that's going to mean other staff have to take on those duties, and again, without extra compensation, that's going to be tough. We also, in one sense, are very fortunate in that we've been able to maintain reserve funds to draw upon in lean years, but that does mean that we're working on a yearly deficit, and have been for quite some time. And we also have been fortunate in that there have been some bequests or support from other donations over the years, but again, none of that, a lot of that doesn't go to general operations. It generally funds special programs, or collections, or special services, so again, it's, it's really adding up to an average yearly deficit every year, and we're still demanded to do more. And as you can see, like, the majority of services for children and one full position are fully funded by a bequest, which is amazing, but of course, the bequest is based on the interest rates from the banks, so that fluctuates a lot, so we don't know at any given time if that will support all of the things we need to do. The bottom line speaks for itself. Without better funding, you know, it will just lead to cuts, and it will at first be programs and services and collections, then it'll be hours, then it'll be days, and then eventually staff and branch closures. So all that to say, though, I'm not here asking you for more money. Although if you want to say you want to give me more money, I'll take it. No, actually, I just wanted to give you this information and to engage with you, to advocate with your fellow municipalities, to work together with libraries and talk to the province, and see if there, work on that resolution that we know the province wants to do, and I think they can do, figure out how they can help all of us out and provide the, the funding that we need to provide these library services in our communities, and work with our municipal partners to provide these services. So that's why I'm here. I'm not saying, "Please give me more," but I would take it. But no, it's to give you more information, and I'm happy to give you as much detail as you want at any time, but when you're speaking with your fellow municipal units and you're talking to provincial reps, yeah, if you could say a few good words our way, that would be much appreciated, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mercer, and we're certainly very proud of our library and, and all the good work that you do there, and it does not go unnoticed. And your presentation was excellent today. I know there's probably a couple of questions. Counselor Graham, you're up first.
Well, thanks for coming in. I wanted to talk a little bit to my fellow council members about why I'm, I'm very passionate about the library and the lot, work that the library does. Personally, I feel that the library helped me bring up my children in those early days. Specifically, Counselor Thomas's wife, Jeanne Thomas, has been an enormous support to me. But many individuals in our community are supported by the library. There are programs that are run out of the library for families, for seniors, for individuals, for teens, for people of all ages. There's even food that's distributed through special programming at the library where they're home, where they produce take-home kits that people can access. I think that program is coming to an end, but it was a highly successful program. Our library acts as an unofficial warming station throughout the winter months for many, many individuals in our community, not just those who are unhoused, but those who are on fixed incomes or low incomes, who want to turn the heat off in their homes throughout the day. Well, they spend their day at the library, and what better solution? But it is a warming station for a lot of people. I see often at the library, families meeting there to, maybe it's dad's week to have the child and mom's week next week. Often I see families doing family exchange of children there. Through the Christmas season, I saw families come together there. It's a safe place to exchange gifts. It was really nice to see that. I see that supervised visits happen at the library, too. It's really the only accessible public washroom in our community that's readily available to all of our citizens. It's a safe space where people can be if the situation at home isn't safe for them. People will find refuge at the library. I know that this is tax season, the library provides a program where seniors can have their taxes done for free. So there are all the things that Jeff pointed out to us that are the formal things that the library provides and may be mandated, or is whatever, however you want to phrase that, but there is so much more that happens at the library. And we may even look at those things that are going on there as downloading, I don't know. I feel that many of the services that I've mentioned are not necessarily the responsibility of the library, but how grateful we are to have the library providing those additional things. So I just want my council, fellow council members, to be aware of just how important this facility is, and I hope that we can act as advocates to our provincial government to see an increase in that funding formula, because they aren't going to survive the way it's rolling out now. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you, Counselor Mercer.
Counselor McGrath?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mercer, for the presentation. I will say, I love libraries. Not just our library, I do love our library. It is a beautiful old library. But I do just love libraries in general, for a lot of the reasons that Counselor Graham has noted. They're, they provide so much service. In fact, I sort of liken them to firefighters in a way, because I know I've heard Chief Curry say this before. The firefighters end up filling, filling a lot of gaps that people tend to fall through, and I see librarians doing the same. So my thanks to librarians everywhere for everything that they do. I have some questions about some of the data you presented. So the $24 an hour living wage for Colchester, Colchester County's big, is, are there any separation of the numbers between Truro-specific or Colchester? Or, you know, where, how recent are these numbers? Where do they come from?
I'd have to go back to my notes at my office and find that out, but I can, I don't know that I have the Truro split out, but I can find that for you. Those are relatively recent numbers, I believe they're from last year, but I can find out the study I got those from and forward that on to council, yeah, no problem.
Perfect, because that is a little, I know if, I keep hearing about the living wage, I spent some time in Halifax, I was hearing, you know, at the time, I think it was a living wage of like $26 an hour or something. Obviously, we all find ourselves in this affordability crisis, you know, the, the living wage is going up, and the wages are not necessarily following. Now, you mentioned some wage raises coming, obviously, there's a minimum wage increase coming, but I noted that there was no new funding from the province.
No, that's correct. So, so they essentially announced a status quo for us for funding at the, at the announcement, so with inflation and everything, of course, kind of amounts to a cut, in a sense. So if, if I'm successful with that 2.3%, then, yeah, there will have to be money pulled from somewhere else. But even then, yeah, with the raise to minimum wage, too, once that kicks in, the, the second half in October, that means our first permanent people will be 3 cents above minimum wage, which is not great. I mean, obviously, with the 2.3% that'll adjust slightly, but not by very much, so.
Yeah, that's my concern, is that wages are going up, funding is not that, that's a cut.
That's right, yeah.
Right? That's, that's not great. That's not what we want to be hearing, especially with all the good work that's, that's being done there. My last question, just about the bequest donations, because that's something I hadn't actually really given much thought to, that people, people pass and they say, "You know what, I want to, you know, my estate, or portion of my estate to go to the library." How would somebody go about setting something like that up? So if there's anybody watching at home who says, "You know what, I do love our library, and I want it to continue after I'm gone," how, who would they get in contact?
I'm, I feel like if you're working with your, your estate planner, or you're, you're drafting your will with your local lawyer, they'd be able to advise you on that, but it, it is basically as simple as putting a clause in your will that says, "On my passing percentage of my investments, or this much of my holdings," or whatever, would go to the library. And you can put stipulations, like, like I said, the one is, has to be used for services to children in the region, so that's what we do, and that's how we fund a position, and a few other things. Others just say, "Do what you want," or others say, "This is for large print, because they were an avid reader," or their mother was an avid reader of large print books, or something. So you can put stipulations on it or not, as you wish, but, yeah, it can all be done as part of your will and estate planning.
Thank you very much for the information.
Sure.
It's very good to know, very good to know. Counselor, oh, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, my question, Madam Mayor, is directed toward Mr. Doulter. I believe Mr. Mercer said that 90,000 was the donation from the town to, to the library. Is that in cash, or is that a cash donation, or is that in kind? Because the town owns the building, so there's heat, there's light, there's maintenance on the building, et cetera. Could you just bring some light to that, please?
Yeah, there's a, there's a budget that we cover, the overall expenses and operations, heat, heat and that for the building, so, yeah, it's, it's cash, and that we have an expense budget for library expenses.
I see. So, but that, that must be increasing with the cost of heating and...
There are, there are items outside of the formula that we actually cover as well, too. So, yeah, the actual, I don't have the number with me today, but there is, there are other items, for example, some of the cleaning costs, there's cleaning contract that's, that's continued to rise, which we've been covering, covering as well. So those items are separate, are separate from the actual allocation to libraries.
Right, and I'm not looking, I'm just wondering, I think the 90,000 is probably a low side of that, of what, what's probably...
Probably, yeah, the cost of fuel and everything going up as well, too, yeah, we've, yeah, again, I don't have that number, but, yeah, we could, you could have that for council.
I just want, just wanted some clarity, that's all. Yeah, thank you very much.
And we, and we may be dealing with pigeons soon, too, so hopefully.
Fingers crossed.
Thank you, counsel, and thank you very much, Mr. Mercer, you gave an excellent presentation today, and I hope a lot of ears are open to some of the things that you said, because they're very, very important. We're very proud of the library and the excellent work that you do.
Thank you so much.
Counsel, item five on our agenda is the Torrey Historium. Our presenters today are going to be Ryan McClellan and Doreen LeBlanc-Walker. Welcome for joining us in council chambers today. And you can push the button there, and the light will go on. Here we go, and you're good to go.
Hello, how's this?
Beautiful.
All right, hi. My name's Ryan McClellan, I'm the archivist and curator at the Colchester Historium, and I'm joined by Doreen LeBlanc-Walker, who's our bookkeeper there. We're going to tell you a little bit about ourselves, and then we'll answer any questions at the end. Perfect. Thank you very much. All right. The Colchester Historium is a not-for-profit museum and, museum and archives located at 29 Young Street, which is just next to the library, in the heart of downtown Truro. We're dedicated to preserving and promoting the history of Colchester County, which includes, of course, the town of Truro. The Historium is governed by the Colchester Historical Society, which celebrated its 70th anniversary last year, and the society is run by a volunteer board of directors. The Historium is open year-round and employs two full-time and two part-time staff members, as well as one contract staff member. We also employ two custodians from Steps on Arthur, and the staff is assisted by a handful of volunteers. Before I go into my spiel, I'm going to hand it over to Doreen for a moment to tell you a bit about finances.
I'm just going to lean, I think, okay. On the screen, you can see a spreadsheet showing actual 2324 figures, as well as year-to-date 2425, and a budget for our upcoming 2526 fiscal year. As you can see by the bottom line, we are running a deficit for the past several years, and unfortunately, 2526 looks to be the same. This fiscal year, staff and our fundraising committee have been working hard to come up with new fundraising initiatives to, and bring back some old fundraising initiatives to offset this growing deficit. For example, in 2024, we brought back our annual appeal for donations, which was a huge success, and raising over $20,000. Additional fundraising efforts raised another $7,500. In regarding expenses, we have trimmed where we can, doing, such as doing in-house grant writing, and changing our accounting firm for, for our year-end audit, which has saved us over $8,000. However, like many organizations, cost keeps rising. For example, our last Nova Scotia Power bill for the two-month period covering December 16th, 2024, to February 17th, 2025, was over $8,000. That's an increase of 14% from last year. Although our building is owned by the province, as tenants, we incur these costs. I have included a detailed budget and a copy of audited financial statements in an information package that will be given to you at the end of our presentation.
Now, with that in mind, I'm just, I'm going to put this up front, because we are asking for money. For, so, with gratitude, the Historium has received a grant of $20,000 from the town for several years. The town's always supported us, and, and we've, this is a grant that we've come to depend on. This year, we have requested that that grant be increased to $25,000. And as an aside, we've also asked the municipality of Colchester County for that same increase this year. So now, I just want to explain to you a little bit about what we do and what we offer as a museum and archives. Our museum exhibits artifacts from Truro and from around the county, and our exhibits rotate as periodically throughout the year. Permanent banners in our main gallery expound on themes such as the railroad, agriculture, industry, and education. Behind the scenes, our museum collection houses over 15,000 artifacts, which have been collected over the 70 years that we've been around, and this number increases all the time as we accept new donations through our door. One recent acquisition is the collection of the Great Village Historical Society. That organization has ceased to exist, and we've absorbed their artifacts and archival material. Speaking of archival material, the Archives preserves and makes accessible hundreds of boxes of original material. This includes over 10,000 photographs, which have all been digitized and described in detail to aid in accessibility. Over 1,000 maps, surveys, plans, and blueprints, all of which, sorry, many of which are unique hand-drawn originals, ledgers, and many business records, minutes of town council, other councils, as well as clubs and societies, many letters and diaries, church records, cemetery lists, assessment rolls, school registers, and much, much more material. We also house over 2,500 reels of microfilm, which includes large collections of the Truro Daily News and the Halifax Chronicle Herald, and nearly 4,000 books with Colchester County connections, including genealogies and community histories, many of which are quite rare or unpublished. All of the archival material we have has been donated to us over the past 70 years, and we continue to accept new material all the time. Perspective donation... Perspective donations come through our door on a weekly basis from locals and from around the world. Sometimes that can mean just a single piece of paper, and sometimes it means multiple boxes of material, uh, such as the one on your, on your screen here, which is the personal collection of Truro photographer J. E. Sponigal, which came to us in 2023 and was digitized in 2024. We had a selection of that, of, of that material on display at the Truro Library and how it's on display in our gallery. Another large collection we recently really received is a collection of funeral records dating from the 1890s through to the 1970s, donated by Matatol Werner Funeral Home. Maintaining our collection and processing new material is a never-ending job. Every piece of paper must be rehoused, organized, catalogued, and described in detail to facilitate access. Here, my colleague Joanne Hunt is surveying some new material. Both Joanne and I possess archival certificates from the Council of Nova Scotia Archives, and we strive to meet contemporary archival standards and best practices. I'd just like to highlight a few recent projects we've undertaken in the Archives. Uh, this one is thanks to a Young Canada Works grant. We had an intern spend seven months collecting genealogical material about African Nova Scotian families in Truro. And this project resulted in 20 family surname binders you see before you, which are ever-expanding. Uh, a major ongoing project in the Archives is a cataloguing and digitization of our school register collection. This collection comprises approximately 16,000 school registers from at least a dozen schools in Truro and from nearly every other community in the county. That's an example of a, the front of a school register there. We have recently played a crucial role in the telling of the George Jones story, which I know you're all well aware of now. The text on the banner that was unveiled there at the end of February at the Fire Hall uh, was provided by us from, from archival material, material preserved in our archive. Uh, our historic calendar this year recognizes Truro's 150th anniversary as an incorporated town. And I know we're, we're going to, we have been and we will continue to collaborate with the town staff as we celebrate this milestone together. Researchers, researchers come from around the county and across the continent, and sometimes even beyond, to access our Archives. They're interested in genealogy, which is by far the number one topic among researchers, as well as historic homes and buildings, which is a topic especially popular among new residents in town. They want to know who lived in their house and how old it is and so on. Uh, they're also interested in histories of communities, businesses, clubs, and societies, and churches, and many other topics. In 2024, we received over 300 research requests, which we answered in person, online, and over the phone. Thanks to our events coordinator, Shannon Berry, the Historium also hosts educational afternoon and evening lectures by local historians, continuing a tradition that was begun by the society in 1954. Recent topics included the history of Stanfields, which was presented by Eleanor Marr, and the history of the island at West Prince Street, presented by Nevin Jackson. Additionally, volunteer-led History Hub sessions have focused on such topics as the expulsion of the Acadians, Sir Adams' George Archibald, Truro's own father of Confederation, and early ice skating services in Colchester. A full list of our event programming for 2024 to 25 will be included in your package for this. Other outreach efforts occur throughout the year, such as our Colchester Roots Intro to Genealogy classes, which we hosted at the Truro Library, taking advantage of their, uh, their space. Another was the Lego Challenge we just held for the second year in a row, which encouraged kids to get creative and think about the historic buildings in their communities. This is an interpretation of Fletcher's Restaurant, which was one of our winners this year. And every year, we present heritage awards to community members around the county who are doing valuable work to preserve and promote local heritage. And you're, you're aware that, uh, it's at this ceremony that the town presents the Robert Hilchi Memorial Heritage Award. Finally, just some information about who we serve. For the current fiscal year to date, 62% of our museum visitors were residents of Truro. These included lifelong residents attending educational lectures and newcomers just learning about the history of their adopted town. During the summer, visitors from beyond the county are especially intrigued by what we have to offer, and we act as unofficial tourism ambassadors, directing tourists to restaurants, parks, shops, uh, in the town and beyond. Family reunions keep former residents and descendants coming back, and sometimes occasion a visitor to our museum. This is a group, uh, these are descendants of Harry Wellard, founder of the Truro Music Festival. Uh, they arranged a visit to view an artifact with a special connection to their family. We also host group, group tours by, by request. Here's a, this is a group of 4-H cloverbuds getting a tour of the museum. And of research requests we receive in the Archives, about 50% come from Colchester County residents. Uh, these researchers can include students, family geneologists, business owners, and, and even professional historians. The information they're looking for is often information that cannot be found on the internet or anywhere else. So the Colchester Historium is a wealth of historical information at the center of town. We've been here for 70 years, preserving and promoting and educating. And in the next 70 years, we hope to be even more valuable to these communities that we represent, uh, which includes a large community that you represent, just by the way. Uh, the, we house an enormous amount of unique artifacts and archival material. These collections are ever-expanding, requiring year-round work to upkeep, and no one else is doing the work of making this material accessible. We have a staff and volunteers who are incredibly passionate about local history, and we know what a devastating loss it would be if the Historium was not here. I encourage any counselors who've not been in or have not maybe been in, in a while, uh, to drop by, and I'll be happy to give you the, the personal tour and behind the scenes even. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McClellan and Ms. LeBlanc Walker. A wonderful facility. I always enjoy going there. And of course, we're always there for the awards evening, and it's always very special. Um, now I'm going to open it up for any questions. Counselor Graham?
Uh, you've come to us this afternoon with a 25% increase in your ask. Um, I'm wondering, your opening slide had a picture of our federal and provincial representatives. Have you gone to them with a 25% increase in ask in their funding to the Historium? Or do they fund the Historium at all?
We do get a grant called CMAP, which is the Community Museum Assistance Program. Um, and that is, uh, we can't ask for certain amount. It's based on, um, uh, visitors that come in and things like that. It's quite a lengthy process. I, I haven't filled it out before, so this is my first year with the Historium, so you've.
It, the, that, that did increase, uh, this last year. It went up by $15,000. Um, and as I said, we've also asked the, the other municipality for an increase. We don't get, uh, any federal funding except for, uh, uh, project grants. So we have a project grant right now that comes from Library and Archives Canada. So when you see that, that's, that's what that is. It's not an operational grant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McGrath?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you both for the presentation today and for the reminder that I've probably let my membership at the Historium lapse. I should get in there to, uh, to update that. Um, but I'm always a sucker for a behind-the-scenes tour. I like being able to go where other.
You're invited.
Uh, and I love to go to places where I'm invited. Uh, Mr. McClellan, I'll reach out to you. I'll try and make time. I'll get my membership renewed at that time, but I'd love to have, have the tour. But thank you both for the presentation, especially highlighting some of the work that's been done for the African Nova Scotian community and George Jones. You're right, we are all very familiar with the George Jones story now, thanks to, uh, the Historium and Mr. Jackson's research.
Thank you very much. I want to thank both of you for your presentation today. It was very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're not the first to hit me up for money today as well, so don't feel bad about that. Thank you very much. We're going to move on now to item number six, our last item on our agenda today. It's the Harborside Transportation, and Michael McDonald and Florence Alaire are going to be presenting. Welcome to council, both of you. Thank you. Just push the button there and we'll make sure you're on. There we go. Whenever you're ready.
Oh, it looks, looks funny, but that's all right. Anyway, thanks for having us. Um, we're here to discuss, uh, active transportation in Truro. We're not here to ask for money, so, uh, thanks for, thanks for having us. Um, so just to give you some background, um, there was an active transportation plan that was, uh, carried out for the town, uh, by Trace Planning and Design in 2023. Uh, there was a lot of public consultation that was done. Uh, we, we were not involved in that, just, you know, just giving the background. Uh, talked about key destinations within the town, looked at different, uh, routes and corridors that should be upgraded, uh, to create this comprehensive and connected transportation, active transportation network within the town. Uh, so the final plan recommended a series of improvements, uh, network upgrades, and some regional and, uh, neighborhood AT routes throughout the town. Uh, so the map here essentially illustrates, uh, the recommended network from that plan. So it encompassed four regional trail routes, 20 regional street routes, uh, two urban destination streets, and 11 neighborhood street routes. That's what it was comprised of. Um, this is, uh, the map of the neighborhood routes. That shows a little more detail. So, um, just a lot of, uh, interconnectivity, a lot of different routes within the town itself. Again, the Trace report, uh, concluded with recommending a high-level phasing plan, uh, basically category, categorizing those different routes, uh, into two main phases. Uh, priority was given to those requiring no street modifications whatsoever over those requiring significant street reconstruction. So the town then, after getting this plan, uh, identified the need for a more detailed plan and how to implement the network exactly. Just some more detail on how to carry out the phasing, uh, rather than just those two phases itself. Uh, so Harborside is an engineering firm, transportation engineering firm. Our scope was to review this active transportation plan as carried out by, uh, Trace, uh, investigate the exact feasibility of the proposed cross-sections on the individual streets and identify potential challenges with each of those. Uh, we then developed a revised plan to incorporate, uh, different cross-section, different street cross-sections uh, and, uh, recommendations as well, different recommendations. Uh, look at high-level cost estimates for that plan and to develop, uh, that detailed phasing plan for the town to carry out those upgrades. So the factors that we considered in review of the proposed cross-sections included, uh, the different facility types, uh, facility widths, vehicle travel lane width, which is an important consideration as well. Uh, parking lane width was a, was a factor as well when you look at different street cross-sections. And of course, the impacts to utilities, uh, properties, and at different intersections. So a lot more detail into all of those. This is an important, uh, slide just to understand, uh, basically what the different types of facilities that would be recommended and why they were on different roadways. A lot of our guidance is from the Transportation Association of Canada, or TAC, and the Geometric Design Guide for Canadian Roads. So the guidance for the selection of the bikeway facilities is based on the posted speed limit and daily traffic volume. So this table, uh, illustrates how the posted speed is 30 kilometers an hour less and daily volumes of less than or greater than 2,500. Uh, outlines the different facilities that are recommended under those conditions, the same as if streets are posted at something greater than 30, less than 50, um, with the different traffic volume. So that's, that was the basis for our recommendations of the various facilities on the various streets within the town. So with respect to widths, because that's an important consideration to think about when we're looking at the various streets within the town, when you're constrained by right-of-way uh, distance between utility poles or distance between existing curbs and sidewalks, uh, that are, that are on, uh, in existence right now. Uh, when you look at recommended lower limits for bike lanes, uh, the guidance tells us that we should be looking at 1.8 meters as a minimum. Uh, buffers for bike lanes should be, uh, at least a foot or 0.3 of a meter, except, uh, wider when we're adjacent to a parking lane, so 0.6 of a meter. And a multi-use bikeway or path to function as two-way, uh, traffic should be at least three meters wide. And we're looking at opportunities to narrow existing streets to facilitate the construction or the implementation of these laneways. We then look perhaps at, uh, situations where we want to narrow existing vehicle lanes. Uh, our recommended lower limits of vehicle lanes would be three meters. Uh, where a street, a particular street is identified as a truck route, uh, it should be no less than 3.3 meters. Parking lanes, uh, our minimum was used as 2.4 meters. And just an important note, uh, that lane widths are exclusive of gutters. If you think of curb and gutter, uh, adjacent to most, uh, of the streets in, in Truro, uh, those lane widths are exclusive of the gutter as part of the curb and gutter. They're just, yeah, no, uh, most, most gutter width is about, uh, 0.37 meters, um, in most locations. So kind of the conclusions of our, uh, review of the Trace Plan, um, was, was noteworthy in that seven of the 22 routes that were identified do not include a suitable traffic, uh, cycling facility. Um, so the wrong type for the wrong, uh, uh, you know, from the table earlier, based on traffic volumes and posted speed limit, the recommended facility was not appropriate. Uh, two of the 22 routes did not include a cycling facility. Uh, two of the 22 routes do not include a cycling facility and are not recommended, as it was included Espinade and Roby Street. Three of the 22 routes are actually not feasible. And 10 of the 22 routes include a suitable cycling facility and are considered feasible. Most require modifications to ensure adequate lane widths. Um, so it's quite noteworthy that there was a lot of issues that we found in review of the study that needed to be updated, um, in order for the town to move forward with a reasonable phasing and implementation plan. We look at the neighborhood street routes. Uh, one of the 11, just one of the 11 routes does not include a suitable cycling facility. Uh, six of the 11, uh, require more volume and speed data to confirm suitability. So that, that data was not available, so it needs to be confirmed for moving ahead with the recommendation. And four of the 11 routes include a suitable cycling facility and considered feasible, but require modifications to ensure that the lane widths are adequate. So now, uh, after reviewing and coming up with conclusions, uh, of our review from looking at the Trace Plan, uh, we move forward to producing a revised network plan. Um, so certainly some of our key goals in the, in the implementation or the construction of this network plan was to prioritize key east-west and key north-south routes uh, to form the spine of the network. So making sure that there was multiple redundant networks, both east-west and north and south, to connect, uh, the key destinations within the town. So that's always a key, you know, transportation network that people can get to where they want to go with relative ease and connectivity. Um, once this is complete, that, those additional regional routes can provide the further connectivity uh, and implement to connect all areas of the town easily. So, uh, kind of more, uh, pared-down connected network is the one that we have recommended. So those, again, those key core routes, east-west, include Marshland Drive, Prince Street, uh, Charles and Brunswick Street corridor, McClures Mills, uh, Road and Glenwood Drive. And the north-south routes include Jennerper, Willow, Lorne, and Young. So just, uh, some of the examples of the cross-sections, uh, that we've developed as part of that. Um, and looking in great detail at each one of the streets, just to make sure that the town understands exactly what is required at some of these streets. So Willow Street, as an example, uh, in the section between Prince and Cobicwad, Cobicwad Trail, um, the recommendation was to replace the sidewalk in the west side with a 3.0-meter multi-use pathway. So that's two-way traffic, as you can see on the left of the figure. Um, to facilitate this, reduced lane widths, um, are shown here, and they're suitable for the truck route that it is in this section. Um, there are minimal impacts to utilities and property in this case. Uh, it's certainly a huge factor if we had to replace or relocate utility poles along a long stretch of any street. So anywhere that was avoided, uh, that was, that was. any street. So a, anywhere that was avoided, uh, that was, that was certainly attempted to be done. Uh, there would be some impacts to, uh, the traffic signals at Prince and Arthur, uh, in this case. So oftentimes, there are some minor impacts at intersections where the AT facility interacts. As you can see here, the existing versus a new build in this section of Willow Street. Uh, Cobbequid Trail, uh, to Glenwood Drive from Willow, uh, there's a, uh, uh, the transition of the multi-use path, uh, to the east side, crossing, uh, to the east side of Cobbequid Trail crossing that minimizes the impact to utility poles. So, uh, moving to the other side, uh, in this case. Uh, want to upgrade the crossing to pedestrian-activated, uh, reduce the lane widths, which are suitable for truck route, and new sidewalk on the west side between McClures Mills and Glenwood Drive to close the existing gap. So, uh, making sure that we have a connected network that people can get, there's no gaps in the system itself is important. Uh, and just, uh, at the end, just that further investigation or detail needs to be investigated at the roundabout at McClures Mills, uh, and, and Willow as well, just to make sure that people can get through that intersection safely. Again, at Willow Street, now from Glenwood to Brooks Lane, uh, the multi-use pathway continues on the east side and sections of the, the new sidewalk on the west side to close those existing gaps. So that's, uh, the proposed street cross-section there, showing the new, uh, the new build on that section of the street with the multi-use path. Uh, give another example, uh, Prince Street. So in the section between Juniper and Willow, uh, there are existing utility poles on both sides. Uh, the recommendation would be to replace the sidewalk on the south side with a three-meter-wide multi-use path. Uh, again, we'd have reduced lane widths, um, but they still are suitable for truck routes, uh, for the truck route that it is. It does require removal of the utility poles on the south side. Uh, those utility poles do have primarily communications cables, which we think would be less cumbersome to relocate, uh, to the poles on the other side of the street. And there would be impacts to the traffic signal poles, um, and potential impacts to turning lanes at the intersections itself. So detail that need to be developed and paid attention to at the intersections. There's the new, uh, the new build at that section. From Willow to Walker, um, again, three, three-meter-wide multi-use pathway on the south side, uh, vehicle lane widths, uh, in this section for trucks cannot be maintained. So, uh, again, narrower travel lane adjacent to a two-point-four-meter-wide parking lane. So the truck route bylaw might need to be modified in this case, uh, where trucks can't be, uh, accommodated here. So it does require removal of one of the travel lanes and one parking lane. It does have impacts to traffic signal poles and turning lanes at Walker. Um, it may be possible to maintain the travel, uh, two lanes of parking in some areas, um, if the sidewalk and decorative poles are removed. So it just, uh, depends on local conditions and, and how that needs to be treated in those, in some of those sections. So there's a new, uh, new section. Again, at Prince Street, uh, from Walker to Cottage, um, replacing, uh, the sidewalk on the south side with, with the three-meter-wide multi-use pathway, uh, reduced lane widths in this case are suitable for the truck route. So you see two, three-meter wide, three-point-six-meter-wide travel lanes. There are impacts to three utility poles only, uh, which would, uh, be minimal impact. Uh, so there are barriers on the bridge that might need to be upgraded for cyclists just to increase the, uh, the height, uh, to accommodate that, that cycling traffic on the bridge itself. So those are some of the, you know, more significant, uh, corridors. We didn't go through them all for the sake of time, obviously, but those are all available in our report, uh, for your review at any time. Uh, we did want to touch on construction cost estimates. Uh, obviously, in these days of, uh, estimating, uh, construction costs, it becomes more and more challenging for engineers to, to do those accurately. Um, but there, and there's still a lot of design work that needs to be happened. These are still at very high level, but we wanted to give the town some sort of reasonable, uh, orders of magnitude of what sort of costs are, uh, we're looking at to, to complete this entire plan. It's important to note that no allowances are made for inflation, for engineering design, uh, any property acquisition that might be required, any surprise, uh, unsuitable material that might be found during excavations, utility pole relocations, which are often a, a wild card to us about how much they cost, and, uh, exclusive of tax. Uh, so some of the numbers for the various corridors, you see, uh, lengthwise, uh, estimated costs, um, and some of the notes that are with there. So there's a, a full, full comprehensive, uh, table with all those costs in our report. We did also include a phasing plans, a recommendation to actually carry out these various projects, divided into three categories of short, medium, and long term, defined by, uh, present to five years, five to ten, and longer than ten years. But making sure that the phasing made sense, that you were continuously creating a network that was connected, uh, and building on it as time goes by. Um, so focusing first on building a loop around the core and then extending outwards was, uh, was the mindset. So the short-term horizon, uh, was building about six, uh, over six kilometers of trail of AT network, uh, at an estimated cost of just under six million dollars. Uh, the medium then, and in red, uh, about seven kilometers of construction at an estimated cost of just over six million dollars. And then the long-term pieces, uh, on Prince, Willow, and Young in particular, just over five kilometers at, uh, over six and a half million dollars. So that's a synopsis. Again, a lot more detail in our report that's available for, uh, and we're available for discussion and questions at any time, uh, through the town engineers or, or directly. Uh, but we're open to questions now. Florence has done a lot of, a lot of work on this over a lot of months, and, uh, we're happy to take your questions and discussion.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDonald, Ms. Laird, for the detailed report on this. And, um, I remember when this all came to be and Jim Scott's work in the past and, uh, those meetings that were held at, uh, the Fire Hall and at, uh, Douglas Street School. So it was exciting times indeed. Um, uh, Counselor McGrath has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you both for being here and for the presentation. Um, I do remember attending the, uh, the sessions at the Fire Hall from the other side of the, the desk at that time. Uh, had some great conversations with Mr. Scott. This, uh, this, this all looks, looks great. I think a lot of the recommendations are what was talked about even before, focusing on that backbone, getting that core, and then building out from there. Uh, yeah, if we can show it on the, on the screen there somewhere, wherever it is.
Go back to the start.
Yeah, so folk, focusing on, on, on the core, uh, without a connected network. If it's just piecemeal, you know as well as I do, it's not going to get used, right? If you've got nice, safe infrastructure and then absolutely nothing, and then more safe infrastructure, people aren't going to traverse that. It'd be akin to asking somebody like, oh, you have to get out of your car and push it a hundred meters down the road because it's not safe to drive. Or, you know, pick it up and carry it. It's not feasible, and nobody, nobody would do it. I do want to ask about lower-cost solutions. Uh, obviously, you guys have been here all day. This is just a smattering of the num, people who come and ask us for money, uh, especially this time of year coming into the budgets. Want to look at lower-cost solutions. Have, have we looked at anything other than, I mean, if you want to go to one of the, the cross-sections there where your, your proposed builds, anyone will do, where we're talking about, you know, we've got the existing sidewalk. There's perfect. So you've got existing sidewalk, you've got your travel lanes. This is on Willow from Prince to Cobbequid. Am I reading that right?
Yes.
If you, if you, uh, move the mouse slightly, maybe we get rid of that little banner at the top as well. We could see it more easily. Maybe not. Okay. Um, but, but like having, no, now we've ruined it all together. I'm sorry. I should, I should have let you leave.
Move that or click on that?
Yeah.
Yes, this one is from Prince Street.
Prince to Cobbequid Trail, yeah.
Yeah, so from Prince Street to the, to the Cobbequid Trail, uh, you know, we, I see the, the raised curb, which is great for safety, uh, with the extra three meters. Is, has there been any look into just sort of narrowing some of those lanes? And again, with the understanding that the trucks, uh, you know, especially around that area for the industrial park may need some of that, that width. But to put in sort of like any, any sort of other separation to be able to use that without having to spend millions on, on the concrete and asphalt and, uh, and building that out?
Yeah, I think one of the big things that, uh, we looked at right from the get-go is really, uh, you know, focus in on building and recommending facilities that people will use, right? Um, I think that was kind of one of the, one of the flaws that we saw in the previous was there just a lot of on-street, uh, unprotected bike lanes that, you know, we, you know, felt doesn't meet criteria for what TAC recommends, meaning that it's not a safe facility for, you know, the speeds and volumes that are on a particular street. So basically, it came down to engineering, uh, judgment and the standards that we, that guide us, right? In that, you know, in, in these types of roadways with heavy volumes and these posted speeds, that it should be a protected facility, which means that it's, uh, protected by, you know, ideally in this case, um, you know, we would have more separation from the road itself. Here in this particular cross-section, it's shown basically at the back of the curb. So the only thing really separating is that curb, that, that physical barrier and, and vertical separation. So I, I would say we certainly, you know, at every, every turn did look at keeping cost in mind as best we could, uh, but recognizing we didn't want to recommend something that we thought would not be used or, and or would not be safe for those using it. Um, so I, I would say that was taken in. So it wasn't looked at at the cheapest possible facility that we could get in play, but it was the recommended solution. But keeping in mind, like, we looked at great detail and making sure we could avoid relocation of utility poles, that whenever we could, we would avoid having to move existing curbs wherever possible. So I think, um, yeah, I, I feel safe in saying that we did really keep in mind trying to keep spending and budgets and costs down as, as best we could, but building a facility that would be used.
Right. Um, with regards to, to some of that safety and especially, you know, a lot of the infrastructure being done, uh, I'm, I'm looking at this from a, an accessibility point of view as well. So I, I sit on the Regional Accessibility Advisory Committee, and you had mentioned something in there about like pedestrian-activated crossings. That's something that came up at a recent meeting where we have to be dealing with, you know, it, what is an accessible butt? Is, has there been any consideration in sort of, I guess, cross-referencing with other groups like the Accessibility Committee to ensure that, that those considerations are taken into, in the key?
So I'd say not, not at this stage with this plan. So this, I think the purpose of this was to lay out the network. And, uh, you know, from here, I guess, as the town wants to move forward, there, there's certainly a lot of, uh, design work that needs to go into, you know, uh, whatever corridor happens, including at intersections. So we recognize, yeah, there's things that need to get done at certain intersections or crossings, uh, but that, that hasn't been done as of yet. So I would say as, as, you know, corridors are identified to be designed and built, that's when the details like that will, will be undertaken.
I'm, I'm getting too far into the details then.
I would say a little bit at that, at this point. This is meant to be, you know, a guiding network, uh, building, uh, study or plan for the town that then would lead into, you know, future projects when they come either, either solely focused on AT construction or as part of, say, uh, you know, water main or sanitary sewer main that needs to get built on a, on a new, on a existing street that then could piggyback the AT facility on top of it perhaps.
Right. That, that long-term planning is, is critical to me. I think of instances I've seen before where brand-new multi-use path was done, uh, like the Channel Lakes Trail in Halifax, for example, that then was torn up in large sections the next year because they had to do a sewer project or something. That was, like, that should have been probably been better coordinated. There's no offense to my colleagues in Halifax at the time. Um, but you, you mentioned intersections, and intersections are, uh, I, I should let you know, I, I cycle. I cycled here today. I could have had a very nasty collision at an intersection today because somebody rolled through a stop sign and wasn't looking. Thankfully, I have, uh, good reaction time and good brakes on my bike. Uh, but, but what is, what thought has been given into the safety of intersections? Because the, that's, I know from my experience and my reading, the intersections are, are the biggest problem. That is, you've got too many things happening. Wh- where, where are we working to improve into, sorry, intersection safety in this plan?
Yeah, so I, I would say very little in this plan. So again, I, I think it would guide us on the routes that we would want to, uh, you know, implement these AT facilities through these intersections, recognizing at every intersection, there's going to be some level of treatment required, whether it be, you know, turning bike boxes or, you know, bike signals or whatever it might be, all the, the different possibilities that exist, depending on if it's stop-controlled or signalized, or I mentioned the, the new roundabout. Uh, things have to be carefully considered. Uh, that's, that's really, I, I would say would be not to, not to push things off, but really a design, you know, detailed design item at the time the facility is being considered. So, uh, I don't, you know, we, we don't see any intersection that we're proposing a route passes through. We don't see anything that can't be overcome or be, you know, implemented, uh, at the time. But, you know, careful planning and design needs to happen at that time. Um, so he keep dodging or pushing it off to the future, but that really wasn't the intent of this plan, I don't think, to, uh, bring that to the forefront. But we don't see anything that can't be overcome.
Perfect. Uh, running down to the last of the questions. If you could go to, uh, Prince Street between, uh, Willow and Walker, I believe was the section you mentioned specifically about the, the, the lack of accessibility for the trucks and that there may need to be an adjustment to the trucks by law. Um, obviously, not having the larger trucks, some of them, the sightlines can be issues, so that could be potentially safer. However, we also have a lot of businesses on Prince Street that make use of, you know, they, they have to get their deliveries. You know, all our wonderful restaurants downtown, uh, all the other shops, a lot of them require that heavy trucks. What is their option if the trucks can't come down Prince Street?
So, yeah, you want, you go ahead.
Yeah, I guess the intention in the original plan was to really have this segment of Prince Street be a destination street, so really focused on people who are going to the downtown to, um, you know, visit shops and restaurants. Uh, so the idea was that we would remove, um, the Prince Street as a truck route. Queen Street, which runs parallel, is already a truck route. So then Queen Street would become more of a, a throughfare for vehicles in the downtown. Um, and then a truck route only means that a, a vehicle has to remain on that truck route up until the point where it has to leave a truck route to make its delivery. So technically, you could still have trucks doing deliveries on Prince Streets or side streets as long as they stay on the truck route as long as possible. Basically, it would remove any true traffic on Prince Street for trucks.
Okay, so we're not expecting trucks to, say, come up Queen, up Lorne, or Louise, sorry, uh, come up Louise, somehow turn around an eighteen-wheeler in that spot and then go back to Queen. So they would come up, say, Louise, go on to Prince, and then exit off Prince at their earliest, earliest opportunity.
Yeah, so it's basically the intent of truck routes is really, this is where you have to be on if you're just traveling through up until you, you absolutely have to leave to go to whatever destination you're delivering to.
Right. That sounds good in theory, but in practice, I just see a lot of trucks just driving down the road saying, well, this is, is my, this is what I have to do. Uh, and, and I worry about the impacts there.
So it would remove any true traffic. So any trucks that aren't delivering on Prince Street that are just traveling to, uh, Walker Street, I guess, that would be going to Bible Hill or, uh, Prince Street West, right? All those vehicles would then be moved to, to Queen Street.
Right. Okay. And, uh, and then there was a, a graphic you had here about the recommended widths and protection. Oh, actually, I don't think it mentioned protection, which is what I wanted to ask about. With, oh, you just went right past it.
The table?
That table right there, yes. Uh, so the traffic volumes and the posted speed limits. Uh, how much does the plan get altered if some of those speed limits change? Because I know I've talked to our Director of Public Works about this, uh, about trying to maybe reach out to the province, allowing them to set our own, uh, speed limits, which they don't currently allow us to do. If we could drop the speed limits on some of those roads, um, would there be, do you think, a major difference here? Is it, look, looking at the table? Because looking at the table now, I'm, I think I'm answering my own questions, but probably not, because if we were dropped to, from 50 to 40, I don't see that as being a major change, because it's still within this thing. So it would have to be dropped down to 30 before that had any impact on the plan.
Yeah, so where it comes to those lower speeds and lower volumes, that's going to affect your infrastructure more on your local roadways. So by nature, the core network is on your major roads, trying, kind of the core routes through the town. So once you go towards expanding that network more through neighborhoods and on local streets, which would have lower speeds and lower volumes, then that would allow you for the lower-cost solutions, kind of like you were talking about within the right, the existing pavement.
Right. And then my final question, I appreciate your patience with me, the, the buffering difference, because I see like unbuffered bike lanes, buffered bike lanes there. It's, it's, sorry, I got a lot of glare on the, the screen here. Just trying to figure out if, what, what is that buffering look like between, you know, if you get unbuffered lanes or buffered lanes at these different speeds, of what does that necessarily look like? Are we talking flex posts? Are we talking bollards, raised curbs? What are we?
I'd say most of the circumstances that we're recommending that would be, you know, essentially oftentimes like a grass median in a lot of cases, you know, when, when multi-use pathways behind curb and gutter. So that separation between the back of curb and the edge of the multi-use path. So oftentimes, that would be landscaped surface, I would say. You know, when we get into like on-street bike lanes, or that the same, that might be like a painted median, maybe with bollards in it, but most of the recommend, most of the facilities that we're recommending are, you know, that separated multi-use path behind a curb. So that buffer, I would say in this case would be mostly like landscaped median.
Right. Maybe I could convince the Deputy Mayor to talk to the Tree Committee about getting something that can be planted there without impacting. Thank you both again for your time and your presentation.
Our final question would be from Deputy Mayor, please.
Yeah, we have really one question. Good evening and thank you for your presentation. It has to do with the routes and the phases, how you decided those. And what I'm wondering is, did you consider the age of the infrastructure, you know, below ground, et cetera, the surface of the street, the need for some sort of reconstruction of that area of the street, et cetera? And perhaps the Director of Public Works wants to chime in on this, because I, I would think that you somehow wants to be, it should be coordinated, you know, what phase goes in, you know, so that it happens in a more timely way and, and gives a better, you know, just better for taxpayers, you know, if everything is sort of done at once, you know. So anyways, yes, if you could answer that for me, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I guess, and you can, I guess, the answer is no. I would say the, for the most part, we look at connectivity of routes, what makes sense. There was certainly a lot of discussion about, you know, certain streets versus another in looking at, you know, do we, do we pick this north-south street versus another one? I, I would say if the town came back and said, yeah, we're looking at a major reconstruction of a parallel route in our evaluation of one route versus another, that, that could change things slightly if that happened, but we looked at, we certainly looked at connectivity of the individual route.
I would see that, I would see that as a, you know, an oversight, because I, I think it's very important that it's coordinated with the.
No, no question about it, but I guess, and there's certainly some flexibility that could occur, right? But we're looking solely at what we think is going to serve as.
Yeah, I understand what, I understand what you were looking at, yeah, but I, I still think that it needs to be highly coordinated. So I'll, I'll leave it with that.
Yeah, and, and that's exactly the job of our department. We, you know, they, they give us the priorities on where we need the connectivity of, of the routes and, and we'll take that and combine it with our asset management, with our underground infrastructure as well as their surface infrastructure, and, and we'll phase it in. If, if there's something that, that should be in the mid-phase, but, but we have a high priority, do the construction of first phase, maybe it makes sense to do at least the prep work for, for the active transportation plan and, and let it still fall into sync when it should, or to do it ahead if it makes sense with the priorities active transportation plan. But yeah, that, that's certainly a job of our asset management.
Yeah, and the, and the value, the value this provides to us really at the end of the day is that as we, as we do our planning, we'll, we consult the plan and we say, okay, you know, we, there's a, there's a section of this, of, of, of some of these roadways that we can take care of as part of that plan and just becomes part of the overall, all the work, the overall work we're doing. So yeah, the coordination piece really falls on us. And, you know, once we have this in our hands, we say, okay, how do we, how do we make this work? And if we're doing the work, then, you know, if we can, you know, if we can afford, afford the cost of getting a, a section of the trail done, we'll, that'll be part of the plan.
The, the big thing is, we didn't want to have their sense of priorities and best connectivity impacted by us saying, oh, here's our asset management plan, make sure you don't go to this street, but that might be the most important street for the connectivity. Because they analyzed all the streets that were proposed in the first plan, and they eliminated some because it wasn't safe or feasible to build the, the appropriate routes on those streets. So, so they, they've gone through that process as best for active transportation.
Right. As we know, our streets are a century old or more, 150, 200 years old, maybe 300 years old, I'm not sure, some streets. However, they're narrow, you know, rather than a modern layout of streets. And so having power poles, et cetera, are, are, are a problem, they're, they're a barrier to, to, is there any, any, has there ever, ever any been any consideration of burying some of those lines, et cetera, to, to give us more room? Is there any of that?
That would be kind of a goal and option. The feasibility, the rough estimates they did, that would only, it, it was based on trying not to move power lines, but if we do move power lines, he, Michael mentioned on one of the streets, he picked a side with the utility lines on it because they're easier, more feasible to move the other side. Never dreamt about burying lines in the street because then your, your, your costs are tenfold.
Right. But we all know there's a huge burying line, very costly, but, you know, we have a lot of windstorms now and power outages and yada, yada, but very, very costly. So, thank you.
Well, thank you both very much for this detailed report and your questions and answers were very defined, and I appreciate that very much. So we're working towards our active transportation plan, here we go, and trying to all work together in harmony and conjunction. And so thank you very much for coming in today.
Thanks.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thanks for having us.
This now brings us to the end of our Committee of the Whole agenda for March the 30th. I'd like to thank everyone today and our six presenters. Our next Committee of the Whole meeting is Thursday, May the 22nd at 4:00 PM. Please continue to be kind to each other and to our town. The Committee of the Whole meeting for March 20th, 2025 is now adjourned at 5:57 PM. Thank you, everyone, and good evening.